Did you decide?
Nice to meet you.
Thank you. Are live.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the June thirteenth Town of Stowe Select Board meeting. Our first order of business is public comment. Oh, a reminder that our meeting is being recorded. For public comment, we will welcome comments that are about items that are not on the agenda. And you can speak for two minutes. That's the most. Please identify yourself. Name and address before you speak.
Lenny Golders, sixty-seven old folks. And mainly just a question. We saw on the agenda that board appointments are scheduled on the agenda for June twenty-seventh, I believe. So is the board, the select board going to be making appointments on that date?
So generally, it's not a question and answer, it's just a comment period, so. I think we've got some committee assignments tonight, so I'm not sure what your
Well, that's
board appointments for other boards and committees.
Well, yeah, my understanding is committees would be different than boards committees. We either ad hoc committees or maybe liaisons from new people to other boards, but the actual board appointments to boards like, well, the one I'm interested in is the zoning Board of Appeals, for example. I think that one would be scheduled for June twenty-seventh, wouldn't it?
So I will defer either to the town administrator or to the Select Board office, because I don't have that cancer under my
No, so new appointments are not on the twenty-seventh, it's just all the reappointments and then we will post the vacancies as they exist and then then applications come through me and I make a recommendation for appointment to the board.
And those are new.
Those are new appointments, because that would be a vacancy.
Yeah, and so let's say more than one person applies for the vacancy. You make a recommendation, but if there's any other
I don't think that's for public comment, in my opinion. You can certainly call my office, I don't think that's public comment, that's not what public comment is
Well, you know, either way, I mean
Yeah, certainly, you can follow us up by any time.
Yeah, okay, that's good.
Thank you.
Well, that's just a
Or any other public comments?
There are no virtual hands.
Okay, we'll move on to comments from members of the board.
I like to commend our public safety officials for incredible job that they did during that microburst that happened down on Barton Road, I believe that's what they've now decided. It's not a small tornado, it was a microburst. But their quick response and coordination. And coordinating with the public utilities as well, because they were down trees on Barton Road, as well as trees in houses, the chimney was blown off of the house. There were some significant issues that were going on, as well as other things in town as well, and just the driving through after it had just happened, it really looked like a war zone. Down on Barton Road on the lake, it was really amazing, the amount of damage and the coordination efforts were just really incredible and made it a whole lot safer for everybody in the neighborhood. So I just really wanted to commend all of them that were involved, also Denise, who was involved in a lot of the communication coordinating as well. It actually, for what it was, it went exceptionally smoothly, I thought. And if you go down there now, there's literally just about no evidence of the event happening in short order.
Cool.
So great job.
Well done. Anyone else?
I would echo what JT said there about the first responders, it was incredible to see everybody for all the incidents that were going on. I also wanted to commend the Spring Fest Committee for pulling together extraordinary Spring Fest. Two weekends ago, I think. It was amazing, given all the difficulties they had. And also to commemorate the, or remind residents that Juneteenth is coming up on Monday, and encourage residents to learn more about it and its significance in our country's history.
Right. Thank you. Denise?
Yes, thank you. Well, I will take mine out of order, because I too would like to acknowledge the fire department for the increased calls that they've handled over the last few months, specifically on Friday, June second, where they handled multiple calls, the microburst, a fire, and an apparatus issue all at the same time, and we had no issues, they did it flawlessly. I'd like to congratulate the Stowe Police Department on the food drive that they held on Friday, it was a friendly comp- sorry, Saturday. It was a friendly competition between Stowe, Bolton, and Lancaster, and Stowe won by a landslide, collecting more than fifteen hundred pounds of donations. The other communities were about eight hundred pounds, so congratulations to the department and the chief. I would like to thank the Revitalized Randall folks for putting on a great ice cream social on Friday, June second. Even though we had some really crazy storms coming through, they had a great turnout and it was a fun night for everyone who attended. I would like to thank everyone who worked behind the scenes, putting on Spring Fest, specifically Jackie Spataro in Mara Highland. It's evident how hard all the volunteers worked. I personally was only there for a couple of hours, but the weather didn't seem to keep anyone away and everyone was having a great time, visiting all the tables and socializing. The municipal buildings will be closed next Monday and observance of Juneteenth. We will also be closed July third and fourth for Independence Day. Should be noted that July third is not a holiday, but the majority of the employees asked to take it off. So there will be a handful of folks working, but out of safety reasons, we'll be closing the buildings to the public, so if folks have business on the third, feel free to call or email, folks may be in, but I'd say ninety percent of the employees have asked to take the day off. And just finally, I personally will be taking that week off, the week of July fourth, so I will not be here that week. And that is my report for you this evening.
Thank you. So next, we have discussion and possible vote, we have an update from the Nishoba Regional High School building project. Good evening, Kirk.
There we go, unmute. Madam Chair, thank you for the recognition, it's my pleasure to be here tonight. And I believe Trev Verito may be in the room also with me. I'm here to give you my regular update. We, because of the timing of the Select Board meetings and our school building committee meetings, I actually have two briefs that have, I believe, been presented, any materials, night board brief six and board brief seven. The last time I spoke with this board on April eleventh, we got into some explanation about how the reimbursement rate by the MSBA is determined. And this time, and that was anticipation of releasing the estimation numbers that came out. And so after the estimators for both the OPM and the architect were able to cross-check and consolidate their independent estimates, came together that the taxpayer estimated taxpayer share of the building project would be a hundred and seventy-eight million dollars and change. That does fit within the anticipated or forecasted bandwidth that we put out there back in November, somewhere between one hundred and seventy-five to one hundred and eighty-five million was the bandwidth for the taxpayer share. The total cost of the project is going to be two hundred and forty-one million dollars and change. And so the delta there is the amount that the MSBA would participate in according to our reimbursements, and that would be approximately sixty-three million and change. So that's the cost of the project, and as we've talked about in all the updates that I've come to, is we understand, we recognize this is a costly project, and we had some discussions even before about the impact of why the escalating costs of construction have happened over the years. But this is the place where we are now. Tomorrow night, we'll be holding a public forum. And that public forum will be a presentation by the OPM, the architects, as well as myself, on next steps in the process. Then on Thursday night, our school building committee will be meeting to vote submission of the project and cost of the project to the recommendation to the school committee, who will then take up a meeting immediately afterward to vote the submission to the MSBA, which needs to be completed and submitted by June twenty-seventh. So we're at, Madam Chair, we're at that exciting time where we've gotten down through this estimation process. And so there's still some things to go. I do know there's been some conversation around the building permits and some discussions with the town of Bolton regarding the building permits, and there is statutory guidance on that, and so as we work with the town of Bolton, there's potential relief that would lower the total cost of the project a little bit. Potentially up to two million dollars, but that all has to be ironed out in terms of the cost of permitting relative to what the statute allows for permitting. Board brief seven is in front of you as well, I would encourage you to sort of lay the two board briefs next to each other, because you get a sense of how the conceptual design evolves over time as things come into it. What I will caution anyone who has a chance to look at these images, no materials have been selected, you know, that element of the design has been selected. Rather, it's in these conceptual images to illustrate the potential of what the building could look like inside. So you'll see some of those renderings, as well as the conceptual map, there's been no significant changes to the layout of the school, the traffic pattern, the parking lot, since the last time I updated this board. And so it's at that point, I think I can wrap up and take any questions.
Questions from the board?
Um.
JT, and you? Go ahead.
Couple of questions that I have. In the process of development and design, what exactly are we looking at as far as heat pumps, solar systems, things of that nature, to reduce the ongoing cost on an annual basis to run the buildings and to keep the maintenance levels down?
Yeah, so the cost of the project is a conservative cost, and so one of the costs that is an expensive element of the project is the geothermal system that we would incorporate into the building. It's included in the cost of the project. While we're doing the test on the geothermal wells, you may have seen some action of those wells being dug at Nishoba Regional High School in the past month. And so they're digging two test wells, there could potentially be an array of one hundred and twenty to one hundred and forty wells at a depth of up to five hundred feet. All that has to be done through the study process of that. And as from that process forward, we're going to understand what the scope of that installation would be, so there could be some cost adjustments. But we would expect the cost adjustments to be to the south, not to the north, because they've estimated conservatively for one hundred and forty wells into the project.
That's great.
But I would say that is the feature in terms of our in scale of impact, in terms of our green energy efforts, there's other efforts along the way in terms of the type of windows you install, to looking at solar opportunities, to a variety of things. I will say that to get the two percent reimbursement rate for green energy is based on the LEED standards, and we've met all those standards, and that's why we were able to gain that extra two percent in the reimbursement rate, so we were happy about that. And we exceeded that, that there's levels of the LEEDs. And I can't, I don't know what our points are at the moment, but we're well above the threshold to achieve that rating.
Great. Go ahead.
I'm still totally new to this whole thing, so forgive me if my question comes across as uneducated, but hundred and seventy-nine million in expense to the district, I'm assuming the current building is already paid off from the last construction.
Yes, well, there is a portion of the building that isn't yet, but
Okay, so we'll be paying for this and for what's left over from the current building, and we have no idea how that hundred and seventy-nine million will be distributed amongst the three towns, but how is that paid for?
Yeah. So we're going to be covering this in detail tomorrow night, and I'll give you a sneak peek into that presentation, and it's also included in some of our previous presentations. The long and the short of it is, there are two debts that currently are on our assessments every year when we present the operational budget. One's the track and field for the high school, and the other is the auditorium project that was done in nineteen ninety-eight. Both of those are going to be coming off the books in the next couple of years. So those projects will be coming. Please excuse me.
Apparently, the dog has an opinion, too.
You can't unmute, so hang on.
Well, I think you've all learned that when I do my evening meetings at home, I come out to the airstream in the yard and the doctor, the dog decided to join me, so pardon me, forgive that interruption. And so those two debts will be coming off the books before this one comes on, and we'll be providing detail about that as we move forward. In terms of Stowe's share of this, it's outlined in the regional agreement that was voted on by all three towns, and it was a reaffirmation, there was no change when the towns revoted this just recently, our most recent town meeting. But it's based upon headcount of a high school enrollment and the share for each town. Right now, the town of Stowe is approximately thirty-five percent of the high school enrollment, with Bolton being approximately thirty-two, Lancaster thirty-three. And so that adjusts over the years as your high school population adjustment happens. We have historically been a third, a third, a third in our high school enrollment, so I think that's what you could reasonably expect over time. Tomorrow, we're going to talk a little bit about, we're not going to be able to get into, say, specifically what the cost to the taxpayer or to per one hundred thousand dollars of property value, because once the cash flow determinations are made, that's provided to our bond council and also to our financial advisors, and they'll be working with a group that'll be working with Finance and Operations Director Ross Moe Karen as an advisory team for the finance strategy for the project. Once that finance strategy is established, that will be submitted to our town administrators, who will then work with their assessors and will be able to get a sense of, you know, what is the cost of the project on a per hundred thousand dollar basis, or, you know, how many donuts or cups of coffee is it per day to understand the cost of the project? So that is coming, you'll be seeing that information later this summer as we work through the financial experts on those elements.
So somewhere in the near future, rough estimate, the town of Stowe will be in for about sixty million dollars for this project.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm shocked, but I'm good.
Other?
No? Other questions? There we are, satisfied.
Well, as always, I'll be working through the summer, and if for any reason you would like me to come up here before the board, because you might have questions about the project, I would be happy to do so. This will be my last appearance until the fall regarding the board briefs. That was a communication strategy we developed earlier by Madam Chair, I always will avail myself to come before the board if you have any questions regarding the project.
Thank you, that's great. Thanks, Kirk.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
Thanks, everyone, I'm going to jump off, too. Take care.
Thanks, Lea, too. So that brings us to an event permit for the nine eleven heroes run at the American Heritage Museum on September ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Carrie and Hunter are on here.
Great.
Good evening, everyone.
May I just clarify before we get to them, so the only reason that this is coming before the board, because it's entirely taking place on private property, but because it's under the American Heritage Museum, and we have that agreement with them that any events need to go before the board. So I will say, it has gone through the muster here, all departments are fine with it, and that's really the only reason why I had to come here this evening.
Great. Thank you.
Is there any detail you need me to provide? I've never been to one of these meetings, so I want to make sure I follow the proper etiquette.
You have, you have an opportunity to publicize your event briefly.
Absolutely, sure. So, thank you. The event is the nine eleven heroes race, it is event that we're running through the Travis Mannion Foundation, and ultimately, the point of the event, it's a five K run, and the point would be to raise money for the Travis Mannion Foundation, which is an organization that does a multitude of things, one of which is they host Character Does Matter presentations for youth, so school, other areas to identify or help youth understand how they can use their character strengths to do good in the world. They also partner and host expeditions for families who have Gold Star families, so folks who have lost a family member due to being in the service, and the organization is a non-for-profit organization, so everything that they do as far as the expeditions and so forth, for the most part, is paid for through the organization. We hope, we are also offering fifty percent off tickets to the museum that day, and hope to have some fun activities there, aside from the run.
Great, thank you. Hunter, we have one question in the audience, Hunter, do you have anything to add before that?
No, that sounds great, this is the first time for us, so I guess the runners are going to be doing loops around the runway, so it should be fun, hopefully the weather will be not too hot, Carrie, right? But yeah, I think it'll start somewhere around nine o'clock and probably go for a couple hours, probably start to wrap up around noon.
Great.
John, yeah, John Claude Romano, New Thirty-three Boxway Road, I know the agreement between the town and Heritage Museum allows a certain number of certain types of events every year. I don't know if this is included in, is any of those kinds of events, and then the sort of related question would be, is there any plans to have any, I would say, noise-making activity, like, will they also be offering tank riding things or anything like that, which tend to generate noise and disrupt the neighbors?
We've been doing tank rides pretty consistently for a while now. And if we have the want and need, we will be doing it over that weekend as well. We don't anticipate doing any tank driving, but we do schedule these things. Outside of that, we don't anticipate any other activities.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I may. So the agreement that we have really doesn't cover these types of things, it's really about the tanks and the airplanes, anything noise generating, this is just classified under a special event because of the agreement calls for them to confer with the board on any type of activity.
Yeah, thank you, I mean, it sounds like a good event and worthwhile cause and everything's that.
Yeah. Yeah. Thanks for the question. Okay, Hector?
Who is Travis Mannion?
Okay, thank you, sorry, I couldn't unmute. So Travis Mannion is, there's a book about Travis Mannion and Brendan Looney, who, Travis Mannion was a Marine who lost his life in, when he was in service. He ultimately was somebody who had been on a couple of deployments, was going to go back for another deployment, and his family was joking with him, saying, oh, well, what would happen if you got hurt? And, you know, ultimately, he said, well, if not me, then who, right? Somebody else would have to go in his place if it were not him, and he was willing to give that sacrifice and serve his country as he had signed up. So he did go for his last deployment, and that's when he had lost his life.
Thank you, I just thought it was important to make sure everybody knew.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks. So do we need to vote on this?
Yes, please.
Right.
Right in prior motion.
Yes.
I move to approve a special event permit for the Trevor Mannion Foundation TMF nine eleven heroes run to be held at the American Heritage Museum on Saturday, September ninth, twenty twenty-three, starting at seven thirty AM.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks for
Thank you for doing
hoping successful.
Absolutely, thank you, greatly appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks, everyone, have a good evening.
So Carrie, the board will sign the special permit and we'll send it to you tomorrow, just so you can have it for your records.
Excellent, thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Have a great evening.
Thanks, take care.
Bye.
Okay, next up, a conversation with the Green Advisory Committee. Hi, Arnie. So this is regarding a municipal fossil fuel policy.
Thank you, I'm Arnie Epstein, fifty-one Taylor Road. Can we get this?
Yeah, just to take a sec.
So, yeah, you've seen this presentation before, so I'll try to go through it fairly rapidly. This slide shows what the proposed policy is, it's basically indicating that the preferred approach is fossil fuel-free design of new and renovated municipal buildings, or when the existing HVAC system is replaced, with exceptions where fossil fuel-free design is either not feasible or practical. This is the same wording that was presented to you last July. Next slide. So just a bit of a background. As indicated, we presented this proposed policy last July. At the time, the Select Board wanted the Capital Planning and Finance Committee to review the proposed policy before taking action. So since that time, both the Finance Committee and Capital Planning have reviewed the proposed policy and support it. And I believe you have a letter from Capital Planning in your packet indicating their support. So next slide, please.
Yeah.
So just as a reminder, the Select Board established the Green Advisory Committee to help align Stowe with the statewide greenhouse gas emissions reduction targets, and buildings represent half of the town emissions, and we think the town should lead by example by reducing or eliminating use of fossil fuels in our municipal buildings. And it's almost, goes without saying, it's almost always, it is always less costly to construct all electric than retrofit later. Next slide just shows the reduction in fossil fuels, next slide, please. Emissions, rather. So just wanted to point out on this slide that first of all, that the construction costs are typically comparable to, and sometimes even lower, when no fossil fuels are used for heating or water. And that with the, you know, as I'm sure you've seen, both at the federal level and state level, that grants are becoming more and more available for fossil fuel-free construction. There is now, in fact, an addition There is now, in fact, an addition to the grants that had been available at the time that I first presented this proposal to the board. And as I think I indicated, at that time, we've already received from the Green Communities Division, almost four hundred thousand dollars towards the retrofit of existing municipal buildings. There is a new grant available from the Green Communities Division called a Building Decarbonization Grant that would be a five hundred thousand dollar grant if if we if it was awarded to us. One thing I can say that it would be unlikely that we would get awarded the grant were we to use fossil fuels in any new or renovated municipal building. And finally, we have, fortunate to have one of the lowest, if not the lowest, electric rate in the state. And as a result of that, costs, operating costs, using electricity rather than fossil fuels for building heating and hot water are less expensive than gas, propane, and fuel oil. Next slide. So this is just a graphical comparison of both operating costs and greenhouse gas emissions between the use of electricity for electric heat pumps. That's the bottom green bar on the left and the right chart, the left chart showing operating costs, the right chart showing greenhouse gas emissions. And as you can see in both cases, and in particular, with greenhouse gas emissions, the emissions are dramatically lower when using electricity. The next slide, please. So this is just an example. The first retrofit that was done was for the police, and that was back in two thousand seventeen. They installed a heat pump. A little more than half of that HVAC upgrade was paid for by a Green Communities Grant. Next slide. And this is just showing what the results of that retrofit were. The chart on the left shows the before and after difference in greenhouse gas emissions. The chart on the right is the before and after difference in operating costs, annual operating costs. So in both cases, as you can see, is a really significant, I want to say almost dramatic difference both in cost savings to run the police building and obviously in greenhouse gas emissions as well. Next slide. So we believe that the proposed policy will reduce costs and help meet the state and local emissions targets. And we are asking the Select Board to adopt this policy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's great. Questions from the board?
It's great that we live in a town that can take advantage of really low electricity costs now. We don't know how long that would be for. Shouldn't the policy do any of the plans include alternatives to electricity, like solar or wind power or anything like that? Should we have part of that be part of the policy?
We don't explicitly have it part of the policy. I think certainly solar would be one thing that we very much encourage.
But solar is non-fossil fuel.
So, you know, part of the construction or renovation of a new building, if possible, you know, we would want to have rooftop solar or canopy solar, although we're not explicitly including that as part of the proposed policy. And I think just in quick response to your question about the rates that we currently enjoy and you know, how long we can depend on them. You know, over three quarters, about eighty percent of our electricity is from Seabrook. You may know that. And Seabrook is licensed through twenty fifty. And the debt that Hudsonline Power incurred when that ownership arrangement was first agreed to has been paid off several years ago.
Right. Thanks.
And I guess the other response to that could be how volatile is, you know, natural gas and fuel oil? At least with electricity, we have long-term contracts. You get that.
I just know things change, so. Thinking relying on low rates for eternity might not be a good idea, but okay, thanks.
No, it's an excellent point. I think that as we've seen over the last several years, you know, there's been enormous volatility in fossil fuel costs, less so electric costs.
Even without our deliciously low rate, it's still fairly solid.
Yep, definitely. I'm all in support of this policy. I was just thinking about when we're relying on such a low rate, I don't know how long we can rely on that.
But I don't think the policy needs to get into the specifics of what non-fossil fuel approach is used. If we have the policy in place, which is from my understanding, what the Commonwealth is asking us to move forward with, whether it be, you know, solar, wind, heat pumps, whatever the situation, using solar to generate the heat pumps for that matter, and taking it off of the grid completely with Hudson Lightning Power in the future. I think that's something that can be worked out, the specifics for later time. But I think the policy itself needs to be set forth.
And so this would become a Select Board policy, which you could change at any time. So if if the market were to change, if there was were to be something or a different alternative out there, you could just revisit the policy if you wanted to.
In your slide, you talked about the CO2 emission reduction associated with the police station conversion. How did you generate those numbers? Or how were those numbers generated?
Good question. So the police station up through two thousand seventeen, basically, the two fuels it used were natural gas and electricity. So natural gas, there's a CO2 emissions per, you know, BTU.
So you use standard?
We just use the standards. For electricity, it's somewhat different, and I don't want to go too much into the weeds. But there's what's called an emissions factor for electricity, which is the CO2 pounds of CO2 per kilowatt hour of electricity generated. And because over ninety percent, the electricity from Hudsonline Power is either nuclear, solar, or hydro, which are greenhouse gas emissions free. Emissions factor for electricity from Hudsonline Power is also one of the lowest in the state. So it means that we have some of the cleanest power in the state as well as the lowest cost power in the state.
I I'm totally in support of this. I just think that we should be honest with ourselves that electricity is not innocent in any way. Hydro cuts down trees and converts land and forest, which are carbon sequesters into a loom, which sometimes can be a carbon sequestration. But I just think, I, this is just me thinking that this committee that is so important because one of the tasks of the committee should also be just what are the behind-the-scenes stories with our energy? If we, you know, now I'm starting to pontificate, but I think there's a lot of we can't let our guard down just because we're using electricity. It's not completely innocent. You know, the cost of properly managing nuclear fuel, the cost of trans transit, what is it, transition? The transition costs associated with electric trans. Thank you. My gosh. Anyway, yes, transmission, that's not inexpensive, and it's not carbon neutral. So I think we just have to keep our eyes open. I think this is a first good step. I think the state also needs to be up. We can't just all go, oh, yeah, we're, you know, we're great. We're not great. But this is a good first step. So I I think that the committee has a lot, if it continues, that it can continue to look at. There's a lot.
I personally rely on all you scientists to do that. Thank you. Any other comments? Shall we do like to make a motion?
Sure. I move to approve the municipal fossil fuel policy for the town of Stowe as presented by the Green Advisory Committee at this meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye, that's unanimous.
Good work, you guys.
Thank you for coming back.
It was very hard to get a hold of the Capital Planning Committee or, you know, though, you know, before you get the town meeting, they don't need a whole lot of time. It was hard to get on the calendar.
Do we know it?
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for coming. All right. Next, we have an appointment with the Board of Health regarding their draft outdoor water use restrictions for private wells. Is Mary?
She's coming on.
Yeah, I'm coming on.
Great.
One second. Start video. Oh, it's gonna be too dark in here. Hello, everybody. How are you?
Hi.
Good to see everybody. So I just want to say thanks for putting us on your agenda. I know Mary Lee was supposed to be here, but for different circumstances, I'm here tonight instead. And I was going over the draft that the board had approved at our May eighteenth meeting, and I do apologize if you can hear all those birds outside in our front bush. Super loud, sorry. So we had draft drought. What are we actually calling these? Draft drought? Outwater, outdoor water use restrictions for private wells that we had drafted, adopted pretty much from the state, had the town council look at them, and the board approved them, the draft on May eighteenth. And in looking back at our minutes and what the plan was, a summary was supposed to be drafted and put out for public comment prior to meeting with all of you, but for some, I think there was a little bit of a miscommunication. And we had opened it up for a public comment for our June and July meetings. And again, I'm not sure that was a hundred percent clear. So when I was talking with Cindy today, I mentioned that we need to follow through on what we were going to do for the steps and get the summary out, get it published. Let the public know that they can comment, come to our July meeting. We didn't have anybody come on June. Again, I don't think it was as crystal clear as it should have been. And just let people know at this moment that, you know, these aren't enforceable. This is just a draft. We are looking for comments. We're following what the state has proposed in the event that there is, you know, unbelievable drought, similar to what we had last year. But again, it's just kind of following the state's guidance. So that's basically what I wanted to bring to you. So I think what we're going to have to do after the state, the town comments or people comments is probably set whatever comments we do get, incorporate them as applicable and to the draft and revisit it.
Sounds good.
So again, I think there was just a little bit of cart before the horse. And we'll we'll be back for sure. That happens. Well, yeah, whatever. We all got a lot going on. So, but I mean, if any of you all have any specific questions, then I'll do my best to answer them. But again, I think I mean, I know we'll be back just to present them in a more final form.
Great, thank you. So JT has a question or?
No, just I was just gonna make the suggestion, maybe just table this until they come back.
Yeah, absolutely.
That works. Yeah.
Other questions or comments while we're all here? Yes.
I have a question, comment, I don't know. Am I going? So last summer, when this first came out and everyone was talking about the need to protect drinking water, one thing that I was interested in was explaining to the public that we have a lot of different aquifers. We have different aquifers. And so I was wondering if the Board of Health had or could develop an aquifer map or that at least just shows people where their wells are coming from, whether it's coming from sandy outwash or glacial till or and how depths of wells play a role in water supplies. I know a lot of people were very concerned about losing water because their wells were shallow. And so I think in addition to having a policy, which is a good idea, it makes sense also for there to be a bit of education so that
Of course, yeah.
Yeah, understand where their water is coming from.
Yep. A good idea to have in association with this, the the map. To be, I mean, very frank, I don't think any of the Board of Health members are qualified to do that type of thing. So we'll have to look around to see if the state has a mapping system already out there. I'm sure they do, or DEP must have something. So we'll we'll look around to see what there is. Just to show the water sources that are coming in and feeding the residents' wells.
Well, last, I'll just say, last year, the Conservation Commission put together a map like that, just based on public mass GIS data. We can forward that, but it's ultimately, you know, that's just the Concom using public data, and it would be great if you guys did more with it or whatever.
Okay, great. Thanks for the suggestion. I appreciate it.
I did have a question that you can easily address, and it won't matter what happens at the hearing, but in section two, where it says purpose, a drought condition as declared by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Agency, the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, and the Drought Management Task Force. So between those three agencies, are they what make up which listed under definitions, paragraph B, drought condition, the Secretary of Massachusetts Office of Environmental Affairs?
I believe so, and I can get confirmation for you on that because they would be the ones that would determine the levels of drought or areas that are affected.
I don't know if it matters, but a suggestion would be whether these two could be kind of matched up so that there's no confusion as to, is it the the Secretary of Massachusetts Office of Environmental Affairs or these three agencies? Are they the same? Are they different?
That's a good question. That's a good.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah.
One's not, was not properly labeled.
Yep, I'll mark that on my draft.
And the other question I had in reading this, who reports a violation? Or how is a violation reported?
Well, that's one of the things that still needs to be worked out because right now these really can't be enforced. One, because we would never ask our Stowe Police Department to try to enforce this. And the Board of Health just doesn't have the people power to do it. So it it would be somewhat, and again, this is still under discussion, reliant on you know, observation from ourselves, from residents. I know last year we got quite a few calls for the couple of days that we had it enforced, had something similar in for or in place. We got calls from plenty of residents saying, hey, my neighbor is running their sprinkler at noon, you know, and we're like, okay, thank you so much. And we just kind of kept track of them. But that's one of the things that needs to be flushed out is the enforcement, and that it really just comes down to, we don't, we don't have a water police here, unfortunately. One of the thoughts was to possibly hire an intern for the summer who would not go out but capture or listen to the calls, look at the emails, put together a spreadsheet and a report for us to see where there's like you know, more offenders, if you will. And then, you know, if need be, drive, drive by, you know, or something like that. But again, there's a lot of other factors that come into play with that. You know, we we want to keep everybody safe and, you know, there's a lot of other factors that come into play with that, you know, we we want to keep everybody safe and, you know, nobody get upset that someone's looking at their yard if their sprinkler is on. So it still has to be flushed out.
Okay, thanks.
Sure, yeah. Any other questions?
No. Denise has a comment, a question?
I have a comment. So I spoke with Mary today and offered similar to what we've done when the board is soliciting public feedback, we could certainly work with them to create a link on our website so people can send comments directly through there. It'll go to a separate email box so that they can sort of stay separate from the day to day of the Board of Health, and then they can consolidate everything. So we will be looking to do that in the probably the next week or so, so that they can really kick off their public comment period formally.
Yep, and I really appreciate that, Denise. That's gonna be very helpful.
Well, thank you for coming and thank you for your efforts.
Yeah, exactly.
This is not a small task.
It's not a small task. You're absolutely right.
Well, it's my pleasure. Thanks for having us on the on the agenda and we will, we'll see you soon, August, maybe September, but hopefully sooner than that. But wait a minute, you all meet much sooner. You meet every other week or every week?
Second and fourth Tuesday of every month.
Okay, so maybe we'll see you in July. Okay. So we'll get everything together. All right. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.
For coming. Thanks, Mary.
Yep, bye bye.
Okay.
Now for the sun.
Now for the sun. So now we get to discuss our, the committee assignments for the board.
Joy. What does that mean?
Means my name is on a lot of things. It's not going to be, it might be the end of the meeting.
Your name is on five things from what I noticed.
So if I may, obviously, you can see the boards and committees. Some of them have had a select board member sitting on the committee on behalf of you all. Some have had a representative. I will call your attention to a green advisory. So Carolyn has been your representative. She is stepping down and no longer able to fulfill those duties. So again, we could certainly, if if tonight the board chooses that one of you does not have the time to work on that committee, we could post that for a resident to represent. And as you, as you recall, Carolyn came before you occasionally and gave the board an update on what the green advisory was up to. Obviously, capital planning meets during budget season, Complete Streets meets, I think, once a month. Green Advisory does meet twice a month. Local cable, local access channel advisory committee meets, I would say infrequently, when they are, yeah, when they are doing contract negotiations with the cable providers. So it's not often. I do think they meet during the day, though. I think that tends to be a daytime meeting versus a nighttime meeting. If the board chooses, I am happy to be your alternate to the MAPC. It's Valerie is the primary contact. In many towns, it is the town administrator that serves as the alternate because those meetings are also during the day and most of them are remote.
Who is the MAPC?
Metropolitan Area Planning Council. So they do a lot of regional planning, a lot of regional initiatives. We pay into it by region. And so we can delegate like technical hours. They have a number of technical hours a year that we can use their services to help us with intersection studies or some planning arrangements that we need. They do a lot, usually magic. So the next one is magic, which is a subgroup of MAPC, which is more localized. So MAPC, the difficulty with MAPC is for us, it covers Boston, some North Shore like Lynn Fields, Wake Fields, and then all the way to us, whereas some of the other areas have a much smaller localized. So that's why we have a subgroup because it's just too big and we're competing with the cities to try and get technical assistance. But that's the MAPC. Magic is the subgroup of MAPC. Obviously, you know, Smart, I don't know how often they meet. I think it's again, as needed. I don't know that there's a regular set schedule. The MBTA Advisory Committee by design, it's the chair of the board unless you choose to designate somebody else. It's really just a matter of following up on correspondence that gets sent out. They occasionally have meetings, but we don't normally participate because we don't have an MBT station here. If there's something local with Acton, then we could certainly follow up on it, but we're not as active in that because we're not we don't have an MBTA station here. A couple of them have come off just because like we had the Lower Village Revitalization Subcommittee of the Planning Board, but that hasn't met in a few years. So we decided we'll hold off. And then if that is reinvigorated, we could certainly put a member on it. I know Megan wanted to stay on that, but I said at this point, I, actually, most of the committee members have expired because it just hasn't met. So I think we held off on that and there may have been one other that we held off on just because it hasn't met and there, I don't want to just appoint somebody on that just to appoint it if it's a a committee that doesn't meet. So that's the overview of
So the Tri-Town does not?
Oh, Tri-Town is another one we took off because it has not been meeting. So if that, if that kicks up again, you could certainly put a representative. But that hasn't met over two years now.
Was that something that had to do with the Fulton Lancaster?
It was. Tri-Town was supposed to be for communication around budget and the school department. What happened was things got contentious when I first started here with the three towns. Really not Stowe, it was the other two towns and the school district. And the school district stopped showing up. So it was just the three towns with two of the towns just complaining about the school district. And we would be there for hours and just nothing would come of it because the school wasn't there to participate. And we had a few meetings and then everyone decided it just was not productive. And so we went back to having, what we do now is when the school presents their budget, they present on the same night to all three finance committees. Because what was happening was we'd have this tri-town, things would be discussed, then the budget presentations would happen individually, each of the three towns. People were getting different information. So, so Tri-Town has sort of, again, fizzled out. If it comes back, we certainly can put a member on there, but I don't know that it's necessary to appoint somebody at this point.
And what about the town hall?
So that was another one. It had, we haven't had a meeting with that. So if, I need to figure out.
Already?
Okay. So we need to, we need to sort of figure out what the starting point is with that. Unfortunately, this year, due to all of the other expenses, we didn't have any money to allocate to start working on that. But I think when we had our last meeting of all the boards, the next step is really to figure out the purpose of it. So I need to put together a different type of committee that will do some research on what that building can be used for and come back with some recommendations to this board as to, you know, potential, if there's additional rental potential. So at this point, I don't think it's worth putting a member on because you guys haven't met again in over a year now.
No, we were. Yeah.
Yeah.
There's been nothing to be done.
So.
Well, I can continue on the Complete Streets Committee. Basically, they meet once a month during the day. And you can join by Zoom and they discuss items such as Hudson Road intersection, Great Road, Lower Village, the bike or post bike path on what is it called?
Water.
Track road.
Track road.
Thank you.
Intersects with White.
Yes. Anyway, so I I mostly sit and listen as opposed to participate. I might ask a few questions and actually when I was supposed to bring my notes because of board member comments, it was my plan to talk about it, but I forgot my notes, so I didn't want to say anything stupid. So I will talk about it next time. So I will continue that if so decided.
And I can take on the capital planning committee. I dealt with lots of those different issues in the past and in my roles and positions, et cetera. So if you want me to take on as the representative for that, I can do that.
Sounds good. I'm gonna arm wrestle you for it.
Are there any that you'd like to keep?
I'm actually happy to keep Smart and and the LAACAC, as you call it, the Local Access Channel Advisory. I mean, we're the Local Access Channel Advisory is in the process of renegotiating the Verizon contract that just completed negotiations and and have successfully recontracted Comcast. And it's pretty dry stuff. The group knows me, you know, or I, or I, you know, got to sort of see what's going on. So I'm happy to keep doing it.
But all right. Well, we will not arm wrestle you for that.
Yeah, and and Smart, I've
And I will not arm wrestle you for that. Thank you for that.
Secret, secret fan of affordable housing.
Well, you don't have to. I am too. Those meetings. Oh, my gosh, they're just so hard sometimes.
Yeah, it's
So you had taken up the magic select board's rep because I couldn't do it because they always met on Tuesdays.
Yep.
Oh, they meet during the day?
They meet on a, like a Tuesday morning, not a month.
Yeah. And so it it's actually kind of interesting. If one of you want, I'm not gonna, no, I teach on Tuesdays and Thursdays, so I can't do any of those things, but I was just gonna say that it is an interesting thing to sit in on. It's not always applicable to Stowe. It's often, because magic is the interlocal something, but it includes Bedford, Acton.
Yeah, the Green Advisory Group on interlocal.
Oh, you got it. Fine, fine. Concord. So it's just sort of planning information. So if if there's climate information or traffic information or MBTA information, that's the kind of thing. And so you just listen and be aware of what's going on with our other communities.
It is, it is interesting.
Unfortunately, I work Monday through Friday during the day, so
So you can't do that either?
I have a hard time attending. It depends on what time and what Tuesday it is. I have various meetings that come up.
Yeah.
I mean, I was looking at the Green Advisory Committee and the MAPC. But I didn't think about the fact that even those might be daytime.
Well, magic is a sub, is part of MAPC, just so you
So that's why I'm just wondering, Denise, would it make sense for Denise to take both those on?
I mean, I'm fine. I go to a lot of them anyways. They do both meet during the day. Green Advisory does not meet during the day. Green Advisory meets every other when, every other Thursday. I think they like the first and third Thursday is how it falls. MAPC and Magic are both daytime. I think those are the only ones that are daytime because they they meet with a lot of town employees of the different towns. So they have the daytime meetings.
So given all your stuff that you're doing with MMA, this is are these two things you feel you could take on as well?
Yeah, I mean, I can guarantee I can attend every meeting.
I don't think any of us can guarantee we can attend every meeting.
Right now, they're virtual. MAPC just had a meeting in person, which I went to, it was a breakfast, a legislative breakfast with the planning department and I attended. I mean, I agree. I think it's important to stay sort of connected and it helps us know what's going on in other towns. Again, I'm happy to and just report back if there's things the board needs to know because they are during the day. So and if that changes and if someone else, most of them are open to the public, so anyone could attend. So if you have a free Tuesday at a meeting, you're welcome to get on the Zoom and just listen or participate. But I'm happy to do that for the board, if that's what you'd like.
The benefit of being appointed is you get the emails, right? So that you know what is being discussed and you can decide. So if you do take that, it means you send the emails around. It's possible that one of us could decide to sit in for that.
Yeah, you can certainly do that. Yeah, that'd be great. If that makes sense.
And I'll be happy to take on the Green Advisory Committee. As far as the MBTA thing, so even though we're an MBTA community based on all those new laws and everything, we're still won't have much to do with it?
We don't because it's, it'll talk about bus stops, train stops, train. I I mean, again, it's relevant, but this isn't really the MBTA community. This is the actual MBTA system. So
You do anybody on there, right?
To be honest, like I said, it's the chair by default, but I don't think, I don't think anyone's attended a meeting since I've been here.
Unless we could advocate for a bus or something, but
Brilliant.
But that's a whole nother.
Given Courtney already has two things.
Oh, yes, okay.
Given that Courtney already has two things, why don't we put my name on the MBTA? It's supposed to be playing with the train, so that's all I ever get to.
That's great. Except.
Does that cover it?
That covers all.
Yes.
Sound good.
They got off easy. Megan got off easy.
Yeah.
No, but if if Lower Village comes back, shit's on its toes.
Yes.
We're gonna keep her there.
And I will be happy to give MBTA back over to her. And remember, she did get some communication over the past eight months.
Right.
Okay.
So who's doing? So Denise is doing MAPC.
MAPC and Magic.
You can just start doing the motions.
Yeah, should I, do I need to use the full name?
No.
Okay.
We can, we can add it in for the minutes, but no, you don't need to.
So now I start?
Please. Thank you.
I move to appoint JT as the select board appointee to the Capital Planning Committee for a two-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Seconded?
You can do them all as one motion if you want.
Oh, okay.
Let's do that.
Okay. You start.
They could be proud.
I move to appoint JT as the select board appointee to the Capital Planning Committee for a two-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Engleboard as a select board appointee to the Complete Streets Committee for a three-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Myself as a select board appointee to the Green Advisory Committee for a one-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Courtney as the select board appointee to the Local Access Channel Advisory Committee for the remainder of a two-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Denise as the select board alternate to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council for a three-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Denise as the select board, select board representative to the Minuteman Advisory Group on Interlocal Coordination, Magic, for a one-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Courtney is the select board appointee to the Stowe Municipal Affordable Municipal Affordable Housing Trust for a two-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. And Hector as a select board representative to the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority Advisory Committee.
Second. Mine's easy. Any further discussion?
Please stop.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. All right, let's see. Excellent. So next we will ratify the settlement agreement with Howard Stein Hudson regarding the Lower Village. Regarding Lower Village. Should I read that? So the select board is happy to report that the town has agreed to settle its lawsuit against the engineering firm of Howard Stein Hudson, HSH, over the design and management of the Lower Village reconstruction project. Construction of the project started in twenty eighteen. After a pause in the work during the winter, the town hired a new engineering firm to redesign the project. Construction was substantially completed in twenty nineteen. As part of the settlement, HSH will pay the town over one million dollars. Neither party admits liability. The decision to settle was made in consideration of the cost of proceeding to a trial of the case and any subsequent appeals as well as the risk of loss that is present in all civil litigation. Tonight, the select board will sign the settlement agreement, which was negotiated with the assistance from the town's attorney following formal mediation between parties. It will also be signed by HSH. The board wishes to recognize and thank former town planner Jesse Stedman, who devoted his time and expertise to the project and lawsuit, and Valerie Ortiz, who contributed her skills to the project as assistant planner and was involved in settlement of the lawsuit in her current role as town planning director. Additionally, the board would like to thank our town administrator for facilitating the settlement with our attorney, Rick Holland of KP Law PC, and for assisting the town with resolution of the dispute as well as Green International. And persisting the town with resolution of the dispute, as well as Green International Affiliates Incorporated. And Places Associates Incorporated for their assistance. The settlement agreement is a public record and available to the public. Any questions concerning the settlement should be directed to the office of the town administrator. So, I guess we. Need. Need discussion before a vote?
So nice summary.
It is.
Does this also mean that the minutes of the executive sessions will also be open to the public?
Once, no, you have to read, you have to vote and release them. So the next time we have an executive session, um. It would be voted and released.
Alright.
All of the pages that are intentionally left blank.
At least they tell you.
Yeah.
Um, if there's no further discussion, I'll take a motion.
I move to ratify and sign the settlement agreement with Howard Stein Hudson regarding Stowe's Lower Village.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Uh, next we will um approve and sign the police local two oh six union contract.
I'll be the first to confess. I did not read this whole thing.
Well, there's a lot in there.
Yeah.
I think we have.
A lot of it is.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's great.
I just took Denise's summary.
I, I love the word replaced. I have a lot of it. Um, thank you for, for um your efforts negotiating nights. And um.
I was just glad to see a lot of the ambiguities that were cleared up in the contract.
Yeah.
Thank you, Denise, uh for doing that and moving forward. I hope we can deal with that. Same issue in all the other ones that are coming.
Yes, um, to answer your question, Hector, so um. It is advised that department heads that oversee the union employees are not involved in negotiations, but he has reviewed all the changes and approves of them. So negotiation was Dolores and myself and the union representatives. Um, and then we would meet with the chief and discuss them. Um, it can create animosity, obviously, if the department head is sitting at the table with the union members and something comes up that might be. You know, have a particular issue for one side. So it's advised by um. Labor attorneys that they don't sit at the actual negotiating table. But if I may, just briefly, so this is a one-year agreement. Um, we had some difficulty reaching um agreement. Amongst union members on some of the matters. So some of the more controversial matters that we were trying to. Put forward on both sides. Um, we decided to remove for this year and spend some more time trying to work through those for next year. Um, so this is a one-year. There are some changes. As JT pointed out, we did um correct some of the ambiguity. We tried to clarify. Uh, there was some language that I would read one way. Obviously, the union read a different way. We actually spelled out the rate um. The salary charts completely before it was just one and then. But we put in all the um education so that there's no question what people are getting paid. We can tie out to it. Um, and it gives some. There there are some benefits on both sides. I think both sides are happy with this one-year agreement and, like I said, hope to work through some of the. Outstanding issues uh early enough so that we can be potentially, we could be ready uh by the, you know, fall, but. Maybe, maybe just for next year and have it ready for July one.
Great.
Is it appropriate to discuss what were some of the controversial things or would that be?
So no, because that was negotiation. Not, not for a public discussion.
Yeah. Um, if there's no further comment or discussion, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve and authorize the town administrator to sign the police local two thousand two oh six union contract. As presented at this meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
This is something we actually don't have to sign.
Okay, um, we have some year-end transfers for twenty twenty three.
Yes, um, so as you can see, the majority of the transfers uh that we are making will need. Are needed to cover the snow and ice deficit. Uh, so we ended up at like fifty four thousand and change as the snow and ice deficit. So, the transfer sheet that you're looking at, the column to the left is where we're taking money from. Um, it's easier to just take. Sort of larger sums of money as we can instead of taking a whole bunch of small transfers. So that's why. Uh, the town planner, we had a vacancy in that office for a number of months. Um, the planning board assistant, we had a vacancy, so it left some. Excess funds in those line items. Um, police dispatch, uh, we had some, um. We had vacancy, we had some changes, so that left money there. Obviously, police overtime, there's some money and highway grounds. Highway and grounds wages, we have had a vacancy in that department. So taking the money from those items on the left and transferring it. You'll see um both police and facilities, the electric line, the utility line is well over. Um. Even though it's more efficient, it is costing us a lot this year for electricity. Uh, not to say that we're not paying a lot for. Gas or ever source either, but we um. Have needed more. We had some issues with some heat pumps that needed to be fixed and uh so hopefully that will be resolved going forward. The police department, uh, some building maintenance, they got a bill from last July from um. Someone who came out and did some work and just sent us an invoice now. So that was the money for building maintenance, vehicle maintenance. The police have gone through, um, every year they put snow tires on and then they swap them out and take the snow tires off. And it's an expense to do that. It's an expense to carry two sets of tires. We've gone to all-wheel tires, so we're not gonna do that anymore. So this is to cover. All the vehicles with all wheel ti- all wheel tires. Um, other expenses. We are in the process of hiring a new lieutenant and that will cover the pre-employment um psychological and physical exam that by law we're required to. To do. Um, snow and, snow and ice I touched upon. Uh, the fuel line, um. We uh actually almost ran out of fuel the day before town meeting because we had none and we had no money. So, um, for whatever reason, fuel has. Uh, run more than we were expecting this year. Uh, health department wages, we. Shuffled around some staff when um. When Karen in zoning announced that she was planning to retire, we we decided to take the part-time. Assistant to zoning in the board of health, sorry, planning in the board of health and put her entirely in the planning department. That created a vacancy in the board of health. When we looked at the position, it really needed, it was only ten hours in there. She really could use fifteen hours a week, so we added five more hours to the replacement. So there is. Um, it just costs us a little bit more. It's already budgeted for in fiscal twenty four, but to close out fiscal twenty three, we just need to. Make a small transfer there and the telephone line. Um, that is actually for the cell phones that we pay for. Um, for a number of employees. Um. And that's just, that's just, just to cover us. We weren't really sure what the last invoices were gonna come in at. So that was just a little buffer. I hope that this will be it. Uh, most departments have enough money within their budget to cover their own expenses if they're running over. Um. For those of you who are not familiar, um, several years, this never used to be possible. You could only make these transfers at town meeting. And now it's probably been, I don't know, eight or ten years that they've allowed the last two months of the fiscal year and the first month of the new fiscal year. With the vote of the select board and the FinCom to move money from salary lines to expense lines or across departments. So. I wasn't really sure if I'm gonna get the FinCom to meet again, so I tried to do as much as we can now. Uh, potentially, we would need at your July eleventh meeting, uh, if we do have anything when the final bills. The final warrant of the fiscal year will be on July eleventh. So if we have anything that just happens to run over, we will have to do transfers that night. And then I would have to convene a quick meeting of the FinCom. Has to be by July fifteenth um to ratify any year end, just to close out the books, but. Um, we're in pretty good shape, uh barring any unforeseen expenses that happen in the next two weeks, so. So not bad considering.
Thank you. Sounds. Makes sense to me.
It makes sense. Glad it makes sense to some, yeah.
Hey, um, similar comments?
I take it these numbers under like. Police dispatch, those are just the accounting numbers?
Yes.
Happy to take a motion?
I move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty three year-end transfers as presented by the town administrator.
Second.
Further discussion? There are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. And um meeting minutes.
As usual, I thought they were good.
Me too. Any comments on the minutes, Hector? Let's um, let's check that one off.
Alright, do the thing.
I move to accept the meeting minutes of the May twenty three, twenty twenty three meeting. As drafted.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, correspondence, um. Thank you, Mr. Board, for extending um a letter about the. National.
The anti-Semitism.
Anti-Semitism strategy. It's nice to have the context of our, our Stowe conversation in the larger. Um, context.
Yeah, that was very useful. Thank you.
May I make a comment on one of them?
Please.
Um, so you got a, you received an email um from Rita DeStefano French regarding the purpose quilt of valor. Um, we are actually, I was speaking to our fire chief today and he would like to bring back the Stowe uh Veterans Day breakfast. Uh, so we are working through that and I've reached out to Rita about um doing the quilts presentation at the breakfast instead of having two different events. So she is on board, so I would just stay tuned for that. Um, Sa- Saturday, uh, November eleventh. But right now that is what we are working towards is having the breakfast. Uh, the chief has someone who um would donate food. And potentially the time to to cook, um, and then it would be a nice presentation of the quilt. So. Stay tuned for more info on that, but that's what we're, what we're planning right now.
That's, that's great.
I had a question. About, and not because I'm the newly appointed. Needs under whatever to the green advisory committee, but. Uh, the letter Arnie sent. About what's going on with the library building committee and whether the selected green. Type of. Utilities. Is that in the process? Do we have any influence over that? Or any knowledge of what's going on with that?
We do because we meet quite regularly. Um, but no, their email was, and I have to just pull it up because his email was more about. There's been some miscommunication.
Yeah, it's way down there.
Yeah. Yes, so there has been some um comments in the. Paper, uh, some information that's going around Facebook about the cost of the. HVAC system in the library to make it green. Um, and. We've been working with the Green Advisory. I meet with them regularly. Um, this is more just to say that they support the. Efforts to make the building green. Um, Arnie sent a letter to the paper last week, I think, trying to correct some of the misinformation. Um, they just wanted to talk about the grants that are out there. He mentioned the five hundred thousand dollar building decarbonization grant. As he did mention, if we, so part of the conversation um. With the library project is that if they use heat pumps, they may need to have a backup system in place. And if we have a backup boiler, do we make it electric? Do we make it gas? If we make it gas, we lose the building decarbonization grant. But if we make it electric, then do we have to add a generator? Then if you add a generator, what kind of fuel is the generator? So those are the questions we're going through right now. Um, to be honest, we've nixed any generator because we don't have one in this building. So if this building loses power, they don't have water and can't operate anyways. But we're going back and forth about the heat pumps and the system and um I'm having a meeting tomorrow with some representatives of Green Advisory. And the library um engineers to talk about the systems and what options we have. Just to try and clarify um some of this, the misinformation that's floating around there. So this was more just a. You know, to let you know that they're here, uh, they support the project, they're actively working on it, um, and that they are encouraging, obviously, um. Not using fossil fuels.
Okay. And these grants are things that the person that we just approved in the budget, the grant writer would be working on?
Potentially, but this is what our project manager for the library project would be working on. That's part of what we would pay him for. Um, I'll be honest, the building decarbonization is a very competitive grant. It's slim, even if we don't use any fossil fuel. So. As much as we would love to say we're gonna get that, we will still absolutely apply for it, but it's a very competitive grant. Um, and there are other opportunities to receive some um sustainability and green funding. Towards the library, but it would be a much smaller scale, forty thousand, fifty thousand, things like that, which we will still look into. Um, but this obviously is the big one.
Alright, okay.
So did you determine that if you use a heat pump, you do need some backup?
So. The proposal right now is to have a backup boiler. Um, but in conversations and research that the Green Advisory Committee has done, so the engineers are proposing heat pumps that would go to. That would work at fifteen degrees. Um, anything below would require a backup system. Um, they've done some research that there are some heat pumps that would work to below zero, but now we need to figure out what the cost is. And if. The cost of putting in the heat pumps that work to below zero is more cost efficient than putting in a backup boiler. And then again, if we do a backup boiler, what system are we putting in? Um. I've said, you know, we have the heat pumps and backup boilers here, which this is the backup. It has never turned on since I've worked here. So there has to be some other type of system that um. Can operate efficiently in the cold, cold weather because I've been here and it's been pretty cold and just these don't ever kick in. Um, so we're, we're still working through that. And I think tomorrow the clarification with some of the great, actually, I think it's John and Arnie, um. Myself and representatives from our design team, our OPM and the engineers will sort of talk through what they're proposing and why. And then we'll discuss some alternatives.
Because asking that question in light of the policy we just approved and I have a heat pump in a law certain degree, it just, it's not.
Yeah, well, we've talked about things with the library because we're putting in sort of a smart system. Um, you know, can you change? Can you shut off certain zones and what, and certain weather? Like, do you not need the. Community room to operate? Um, so those are still the things we're working through. Uh, obviously, the goal is, uh, and the majority of it will be. Um, fossil fuel free, uh, but when it comes into backup systems, it's, it gets a little tricky.
Right, okay. Thank you. Maybe this isn't the right thing to ask, but. Is there a way that if, if it were. Uninhabitably cold. That the library could close on the few days when we. Like, I mean, would that be an impractical design, given that the, the, there are places that are. Going completely with heat pumps without backup?
Right. No, I mean, we could certainly, I mean, how many days a year are we really talking? Um, we certainly could explore that. I would be more concerned with the water lines. And I mean, if it's really that cold and you have, if the heat pumps do not work. We have to worry about some other things. Um, we are putting in a mist sprinkler system. Um, because putting in a traditional sprinkler system would have required us to bury a cistern in the ground and the only location is the former fire station. And then we had to remediate for PFAS and de-water the soil and run pipes. Um, so after a lot of discussion on that, we've gone to a mist. System for that. So that wouldn't affect it as much, but I think just the water in the building would be questionable if we didn't have any heat. In the coldest of days. So, I mean, we will look at those types of things, but it could be that we shut off part of the building or we close a floor or something like that.
Great. So nothing, we need an agenda item for my sound of it.
No, I think we're expecting a um. We're expecting the latest estimates. Next week, we have a three-hour um. Cost estimate comparison. Um, the designers have hired a cost estimator and we have hired one through our OPM and they will do a reconciliation for. They said it could be anywhere from three to six hours. Um. And then, but then I think after that, probably in July, I would ask Tina as the chair of the library building committee to come in and give an update. Uh, because we will have more realistic costs. Um, hopefully, some of those things will be worked out. Um, we're still working through what the exterior will look like. Um, at some point, again, potentially in July. I will be asking the board to um start talking about common road and the possibility of making it a one-way. Uh, the traffic safety. Uh the traffic safety advisory committee has been working on that, um. But it will depend on some traffic or parking for the library and on common road. Obviously, traffic safety is a concern there and it's been a concern there even before this project started. So over the next few months, we will be talking about different aspects of the library, especially what the board would need to weigh in on. Um but I think it's important to give an update. Um just to this board about where we stand. Anyone who is interested, we do have a project page on the website with all the information, all the meetings, minutes, everything's right on there, but. Um I think it would be helpful to just give an update of some of these bigger items of the project, like the HVAC system and obviously the cost.
Are they um? Just the library gonna? Have an item, the fall town meeting?
So we will need an item, but I still haven't, so we will need an item to spend more money. Not necessarily collect more money, so I'm still working through, uh my goal is to not ask taxpayers to fund any more of this than has already been voted. Um but that will hinge a lot on fundraising. And if there's any additional contributions from the trust funds. Uh and then what the actual overage is, um I can absorb some of it within the budget, knowing that then it will affect. You know, some of the capital projects that we'd have to be a little more conservative of, um but I think this is an important project that I would not wanna see. Fail because of. The environment that we're in right now and the escalation of costs, so um those are some of the things we're working through, we will need a vote, like I said, to spend more. Town meeting has to um authorize the expense. Not necessarily an additional fund, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I think that concludes our business for this evening.
Um well, actually, I had a question.
Sorry.
Um on one of the correspondence. And it was on the whole fence issue that's going on. Is that not something that we can do in-house with our? Folks. Um to secure up a fence?
It needs to be replaced, so we're waiting on a procurement, it has to go through a procurement process. So.
So the whole fence itself, because the way this reads is it's look like it was just a repair and a small job.
No, it's bigger than that.
That clarifies that. Thank you.
Welcome, one or two fence posts are gone, probably. Half of the rest of them will go pretty soon, right?
It's been my experience, yes, but. I wasn't sure, I haven't seen the fence.
No, and unfortunately, like so many things, it's we're we're having difficulty getting people to respond to our requests for quotes, um. Even once we have an awarded bidder, it's taking a long time, so we actually have to put in contracts now. It must start by this day or else it's terminating the contract, because we sign contracts and the projects just sit because people don't have the capacity, the staff. Um. You know, side note, we've been working on the filtration system in this building since I got here. Still hasn't happened yet, and today the building commissioner said. I heard they got in touch with them, so you know, maybe it's gonna happen, but it's just. One thing after another with companies, so um we are in the procurement process for the fence, um. When it will be, I just don't know.
I know for a fact that delays happen.
Yes, they do.
Alright.
I believe that we adjourn.
Second.
All favor? That's unanimous.
Sign. Yes.